Good morning, Joanne. It's Cheryl in the chambers. Can we do a quick mic check?
Can you hear me now?
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, Erin. It's Cheryl in the chambers. Can we do a quick mic check?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll order to the meeting. Important to note, we have 100% attendance here this morning. Would a councillor like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I got it here. That the November 4th, 2025 agenda be adopted as presented.
Move it to a vote? Oh.
Sorry, we just had a technical difficulty. We're gonna try that one, one more time. Councillor Patrick, can we just get you to register your vote? Thank you.
We'll note that a motion passes unanimously. Okay, so I don't believe there's any presentation delegations or announcements and any business arising from that. So we will go to item five. It's an admin presentation and we will open up for opportunity for council to ask any questions.
Yep, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you're well aware, jumping into the deep end with both feet as a new council, next week sees the Alberta Municipalities Conference taking place in Calgary, a key forum certainly for municipal collaboration and advocacy internal to Alberta. I will turn it over to our Government Indigenous Relations and Environment Team, Mr. Trevor Dooley, to conduct further introductions. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good morning, council. So it's our practice to, to provide you a briefing about one week in advance of the annual Alberta Municipalities Conference. So as you know, it's, it's happening next week. There's still some agenda details that, that we're waiting for, but one of the biggest items that's discussed at each convention is the annual resolutions session. So Mr. Kilo will provide some more details regarding that. But essentially, city administration provides an analysis regarding the proposed resolutions. At the convention, we work with subject matter experts within the organization to provide that analysis. And overall, we're recommending councils consideration to support all of the resolutions proposed this year, outside of two that we've marked as not applicable. We just wanted to flag these ones currently because didn't necessarily see risk with them being approved at the convention. But if implemented by the province over time, it could potentially pose negative consequence to the, to the St. Albert community. We would also suggest that based on the demographic makeup of Alberta municipalities, those two resolutions are likely to be approved next week. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kilo to provide some more information regarding next week's convention.
Thanks, Trevor. Good morning, council. My name is Monte Kelo. I'm the Government Relations Advisor with the Government Indigenous Relations and Environment Department. And before you to accept this information as a briefing on the upcoming 2025 Alberta Municipalities Convention, which is taking place from November 12th to 14th in Calgary next week. The attachment to this report briefing note on 2025 Alberta municipalities resolutions is intended to support council through the resolution session at the conference, where attending councillors will have the option to vote yes or no for Alberta municipalities to adopt each resolution. So some background, Alberta municipalities, or as most people colloquially refer to it, AB Munis, is a municipal association representing over 85% of all Albertans and works on behalf of municipalities to advocate to the government of Alberta on matters of importance to their members. In essence, Alberta municipalities represents Alberta cities In essence, Alberta municipalities represents Alberta cities, towns, villages, summer villages, and specialized municipalities. Each fall, AB Munis hosts a conference where all municipal councils are invited to network and discuss issues of municipal importance at a provincial scale. A key part of this conference, as we've referenced earlier, is the resolution session. Resolutions are quote moved, unquote, by municipality through a council motion prior to the conference. And these moved resolutions are then voted on for adoption by attending members at the conference. Resolutions that are adopted at the conference are then integrated into AB Munis advocacy efforts with the government of Alberta. Attachment one to this report briefing note on twenty twenty five Alberta municipalities resolutions provides a summary of each resolution that will be reviewed at the conference as well as administration's recommendation on whether or not attending councillors should support each resolution based on their anticipated impacts to the city should the government of Alberta follow through on the requests contained within each resolution. So during the resolution session at the conference, an elected official from the moving, the moving municipality will speak to the resolution. After this, an open debate follows, where any attending elected official may speak in support of or opposition to the resolution. Once the debate has concluded, the elected official from the moving municipality will speak to close the debate, after which a vote for support or non-support will be done through a smartphone app. Any resolution that receives fifty percent plus one of the vote in favor will be adopted. In addition to the resolution session, AB Munis typically hosts a session at the conference with the premier and provincial cabinet, where municipal elected officials can pose questions. The full detailed agenda inclusive of this session is yet to be released. But the conference also includes other networking and education opportunities for municipal councillors. So that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up to council for any questions. Oh. Councillor Biermanski.
Thank you, through the mayor, to administration. I have one question regarding the, the conference, the conference in Calgary this week. And in previous conferences, it was for attending individuals, but you could vote on the resolutions online. They had the smartphone app for that. And they've discontinued it for this round, so I was just concerned that everyone doesn't get to vote. Do you know why they did that, or do you have any details on that?
Uh, thank you through the mayor, Councillor Biermanski. I'm actually unaware of this change. I might have to look into it and confirm exactly how Alberta municipalities may or may not have changed that voting app or the voting structure. Uh, but that's something we'll definitely check up on and make sure that any councillor who's attending is informed as to how they can or what they can vote on. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back councillor to all of council and provide an update once we know.
Thank you. And one other question on one of the resolutions, would you like that question right now? Uh, the one that's non-applicable with the, the province review of distribution and regulation of the electricity charges. It's mentioned in there that it could raise or lower ours depending on, you know, where you're located. So that would in turn affect our franchise fees as well, correct?
Yeah, that's our, that's our understanding. So I think again, the, the basis of that model is sort of looking at communities that sort of pay a, a higher rate than municipalities where there's a higher population concentration. So they're looking to sort of have that equalized somewhere to other models that, that exist in other provinces and in, in Canada.
So for equalized bringing ours up, that would equally affect the franchise fee charge?
Yeah, yes, potentially, again, sort of subject to what those, what those models are that they ultimately would sort of wrestle with.
Okay.
So we wanted to, we wanted to flag this one, yeah.
Okay. And do we have any, we probably don't have any data of what it could possibly be. Okay, that's all. Thank you so much.
Uh, councillor MacKay.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just minded in relation to the analysis that you did around the, well, the, the education assessment. Yeah, I mean, in the background, you've identified in the second bullet that the province is increasing the education property tax rate, which for St. Albert represents a ten point nine increase for the twenty twenty five requisition. And then it says future increases forecasted in budget twenty twenty five. Is that correct, or was it budget twenty twenty six?
Um, those forecasts were in this year's budget, budget twenty twenty five. We colloquially call it that. Technically, the province calls it budget twenty twenty five, twenty six. Um, so for the purpose of this resolution and this report, it is budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, which was released this past February.
So, so that's the, pardon me, the provincial budget, then we're not talking about our budget. All right, correct. I clarified something, but I mean, potentially then for this budget that we're gonna have a presentation on, is there a reflection of, is it ten point nine or is it fourteen percent? Or do I just get to wait until you get to present it?
Uh, I will not present that today, but it will be, the, the opportunity to discuss that will be there, yes.
Yeah, no. So I mean, potentially, it could be higher than the ten point nine percent.
Yes.
I, and it's noted in there for the other members of council that, uh, St. Albert has taken a strong position in relation to uh, how the education property tax is actually presented on our municipal tax bill. And we've had several relucia- re- resolutions. Okay, well, there you go. Resolutions. Um, maybe we should have started at one and resolutions, uh, around how do we show the impacts of other requisitions and how it impacts our property tax bill. So, um, it's, uh, I think it's, that's one of the big benefits of going to the Alberta Munis because we can actually, uh, advocate strongly in front of um, the ministers and the premier. Anyways, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you, councillor MacKay. I don't believe there's any other questions. With that, we can, uh, move to, uh, business items, request for decision on six point one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could take a couple of minutes just to reposition staff and get the new PowerPoint called up. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think we're, we're ready to proceed, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence. Okay, I think we're ready. I'm having issues turning my camera on, so, um, everyone at home, you're welcome. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Uh, good morning, rather. I'll be introducing today the proposed twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight financial plan and twenty twenty six budget to you for your consideration. Today's presentation is the first in a series of budget presentations and public meetings over the course of the next few weeks. The City of St. Albert follows an established strategic framework to align the city's strategic and business planning, budgeting, management and reporting practices and processes to achieve outcomes established in the community vision in your strategic plan. This proposed budget was informed by council's approved services and service level inventory, which forms roughly eighty-one percent of the city's budget. Council strategic plan and decisions made in previous budgets also have, that have ongoing impacts. A good example is infrastructure investment were also taken into account. Although a throw, rolling three-year budget is prepared to enhance the process and reinforce our commitment to long-term fiscal strategies, administration presents a one-year budget for council's approval. This process ensures the most current economic climate and costs associated with delivering services to the community are applied. Before I delve into the details of the proposed twenty twenty six budget, I would like to take a few minutes to talk about the environment within which we operate that influences and informs our business planning and proposed budget. I will speak briefly about the external environment, followed by some additional business planning and budget factors that were considered when developing the proposed twenty twenty six budget. Finally, I will present an overview of the City of St. Albert's proposed twenty twenty six municipal and utility budgets and the next steps, including some key dates for public participation opportunities that will assist council's final decision-making during budget deliberations. The City of St. Albert does not operate in a vacuum or a silo, and right now, there are a number of external factors that impact our operating environment. In general, all orders of government are facing a period of economic and political uncertainty, underpinned by complex intergovernmental relationships, changes to longstanding trade, economic and social relationships, and an increasingly complex geopolitical climate. Beginning at the federal order of government, multiple national and geopolitical factors are contributing to an environment of economic uncertainty. Shifting US trade policy and tariffs on Canadian exports to the US are having dampening effect on the Canadian economy. The looming November fourth federal budget is likely to include a growing federal deficit and may ultimately impact federal spending, including grants to municipalities. Changes to immigration policies, which could impact population growth, infrastructure demands and other downstream projects are being discussed. GDP growth projections in the near term place the Canadian economy near a recession. Given all of this, economic stagnation is a risk to the Canadian economy and could become the focus of many policy decisions moving forward at the federal level. This is likely why we are seeing an emphasis on major projects, but trying to find savings in other areas to pay for them. Moving to the province, provincially, Alberta's GDP growth is expected to be two point one percent in twenty twenty six, the highest amongst all provinces. Population growth, residential construction and increasing market access for the energy sector are anticipated to be the biggest contributors to this growth. While the GDP is expected to grow, unemployment rate is also expected to grow and be relatively high, especially amongst youth seeking employment. From a policy perspective, population growth continues to be a key focus. While this growth provides direct benefits to the province, such as increased income tax and other provincial revenues, it also places increased demands on public infrastructure and services, including municipalities who across Canada are responsible for owning and maintaining sixty percent of all public infrastructure. To accommodate this population growth, there have been record housing starts across Alberta and indeed the Edmonton metropolitan region, including St. Albert. Existing trade agreements, like the Canada, United States, Mexico agreement, formerly NAFTA, have to date limited the impact of US tariffs and Alberta's economy has been less exposed to the sector-specific tariffs implemented thus far. However, the general volatility of trade policy with the US still leaves ambiguity regarding mid to long-term impacts on the Alberta economy. Although to a lesser extent than the federal government, the provincial government is also forecasting a growing deficit largely due to oil prices and the associated resource revenue being lower than projected through twenty twenty five. Regionally, the Edmonton metropolitan region has been relatively resilient, and although the unemployment rate has risen, this was due to population growth and the associated influx of persons seeking employment. To accommodate the rapid population growth, municipalities have seen record housing starts and overall building permit construction values. This includes a thirty-seven percent growth in housing starts, which is primarily driven in the semi-detached and multifamily dwelling categories. At a policy level, the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board dissolved in twenty twenty five. It had been in place since twenty twenty eight. This has resulted in a level of ambiguity regarding the mid to long-term future of regionalism, which has resulted in at least one new business case for council's consideration this year, namely the establishment of intermunicipal development and plans, IDPs, with, which we will have to do, forgive me, with Sturgeon County and the City of Edmonton. So what does this mean for us here at the City of St. Albert? Given population growth, we are seeing enhanced demands for infrastructure and services, but at the same time facing new fiscal pressures, including less funding from other orders of government and in many cases, the downloading of services and cost to municipalities. Policy decisions that occur at the federal and provincial levels have a downstream impact on items like governance and municipal policies, grants, and how we deliver services. One recent example of this is hand counting of ballots in the recent municipal election is directed by the provincial government, which affected last year's budget. Looking now at our operating expenses, this graph shows operating expenses per capita and this data is pulled from the twenty twenty four government of Alberta municipal financial and statistical data for the year of twenty twenty three. Operating expenses per capita are calculated by taking the total operating expenses of a municipality and dividing it by its population. This is useful because it provides an indicator of how efficiently a city is operating. The lower the operating cost per capita, intuitively, the more efficiently a municipal is operating, offering its services. Relatively speaking, we can see that still St. Albert offers some of the highest service levels in the province. The community is getting strong value for the dollar. We in administration continue to ensure that we manage our expenses as efficiently as possible while balancing the needs of our residents for the services we deliver and investing in our future. This graph displays the ten-year change in St. Albert's tax split history. It is a good demonstration of the time it takes to move the dial, if you will, towards a more favorable non-residential tax split. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty five, the city moved from an eighty-one point nine percent to a seventy-nine point five percent residential to non-residential tax split. Tax split refers to that portion of an annual municipal tax levy paid by the residential tax base versus the non-residential tax base. Non-residential taxpayers include commercial and industrial property owners within the city. In St. Albert's case, our tax split is more heavily reliant on our residential taxes than our non-residential taxes, which is actually relatively common for Alberta municipalities. The long-term goal for St. Albert is to migrate to a more favorable non-residential tax split. This is, as noted, a long-term strategy that requires the city to be investment-ready to attract new non-residential development. While we continue to have a high dependency on residential taxes, new projects such as Lakeview Business District will have a greater impact on our assessment and tax splits. This graph compares St. Albert to ten other municipalities in Alberta related to average municipal tax increases from twenty twenty, twenty fifteen through twenty twenty four, excuse me. The graphic only represents municipal taxes and does not include the provincial education tax. St. Albert is the fourth lowest tax increase on average over the last ten years at just over two percent. This is useful because it illustrates how hard the city has worked and then frankly, highlights the decisions by councils to maintain exceptional service to our community. The average expense per capita illustrates that we've done more with less, and this shows that the city has also been able to achieve this with lower increases when compared to other municipalities experiencing similar, not exactly the same, but similar pressures. The proposed budget was informed by the external factors as noted, informed by the council-approved service and service levels inventory, council strategic plan and decisions made in previous budgets with ongoing impacts. The proposed twenty twenty six budget focuses on maintaining high standards expected for the delivery of programs and services to our community as approved by council and responding to community needs. As noted, this makes up eighty-one percent of our total budget. Advancing council strategic plan in general and the economic prosperity priority specifically to ensure continued, we continue to support and enable non-residential development with a focus on the Lakeview Business District is also a key factor. We continue to address needed investment in some service areas. Examples of this are engineering, asset management and public operations. And we continue to respond to community growth and investing for the future, and you'll see that manifested as an example in the business case for additional firefighters. In summary, the proposed budget was developed to maintain existing services and service levels. We continue to be impacted by the fluctuating economy, specifically significant inflationary pressures that impact the cost of delivering services to the community, which impacts approximately, as noted previously, eighty-one percent of our budget. We have had to adjust to lower funding from other level, government, level, levels of government, changes to government sharing of revenues and additional costs passed on to municipalities. Long-term financial and fiscal state sustainability continues to be the top priority. We have proactively managed expenses while maintaining high service levels. We continue to focus on cost-saving initiatives and process efficiencies, as well as creating more opportunities for non-residential development while advancing council's priorities. With the background and context now behind us, we'll move on to the proposed budget. We're going to switch gears a little bit now. The city's budget is divided into two reporting units, municipal on the left of the screen and utility on the right. Within the municipal and utility reporting units, it is further subdivided into operating and capital budgets in both cases. The municipal operating budget has both base and growth components. And the capital budgets on both the municipal and utility sides have repair, maintain, replace, RMR and growth components. Administration is presenting a municipal operating budget with a levy of one hundred and fifty-one point nine million, which equates to a three point nine percent tax increase. And as you can see on the screen, that equates to a twenty-nine dollar, uh, increase per a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. The twenty twenty six municipal operating budget increase can be broken down as follows. Two point two percent to maintain current services and service levels. One point five percent to support the repair. One point five percent to support the repair, maintain and replace replacement rather of existing capital assets as per council policy C F S O five. And finally, a zero point two percent increase due to library and arts and heritage asks. I will very quickly go through a summary of some of the key changes. I would note that all of these will be delved into in further detail during the functional presentations over the next couple of days. The proposed municipal budget includes one point three million dollar in increased revenues. A very summary of the changes is as follows. A one point one million dollar increase in service users, sales and user fees due to increased rates increases, sorry, increase in rates to fees, admissions and facility rentals. Other revenue sees an increase in two hundred and twenty five thousand principally due to higher than anticipated supplementary tax and internal garage recoveries. Government transfers, we see a decrease in a hundred and forty six thousand dollars due to a reduction in the Clean Energy Improvement Program grant for twenty twenty six. This has been, which has been offsetting expenses. This does not impact the tax levy because it's offset by an increase in F C S S funding. Our ambulance contracted service revenues are increased by a hundred and thirty six thousand due to annual, annual inflationary impacts built into our current contract with Alberta Health Services. Licenses and permits, we see a hundred and twenty four thousand increase due to rate increases approved as part of the twenty twenty five master rates. You see a two hundred and twenty two thousand dollar increase in franchise fees due to higher rate, uh, higher rates and growth projections by utility companies. In interest income, we see a five hundred and two thousand dollar increase as the city's current investment portfolio and some long-term securities with higher interest rates. We see a two point eight million dollar decrease in transfers to from reserves. This is due to a reduction in the off-site levy reserve transfer as a debenture for Range Road two sixty was paid off in twenty twenty five. In addition, there were several one-time projects in twenty twenty five that do not carry into twenty twenty six. These include the municipal election, Special Olympics, planning and twenty twenty five public art projects. Proposed municipal budget includes six point nine million dollars in increased expenses. Summary of the major changes include salary wages and benefits. This includes increases due to the annualization of salaries, including the twenty twenty five approval of the sixteen F T Es and equates to two point one million dollars. Contracted and general services, we see a one point four million dollar decrease. This is due to one-time twenty twenty five projects funded from reserves and grants. These include the municipal election, Special Olympics and twenty twenty five public art projects and C P grants. Insurance costs were also lower as the city entered into a new contract. Offsetting these were increases for transit drivers and I T technology. Transfers to and from operations and capital saw a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase due to additional funding requests from the library. Materials, goods, supplies and utilities saw a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar decrease in natural gas expense, gas diesel costs and one-time office expenses relating to the municipal election, offset by an increase in equipment costs to maintain fleet equipment. Purchases from other governments saw a five hundred and forty million dollar increase, and this is a result of some of the specifics of the R C M P contract. Other expenditures, we saw a three point nine million dollar increase, and this increase relates to the corporate contingency for cost of living and union agreements. Debencher principal and interest repayment saw a seventeen thousand dollar decrease, seeing the retirement of two debentures in twenty twenty five service place in Range Road two sixty. This decrease is offset by the anticipated increase for File Hall four construction costs, Villanova Road, North St. Albert Trail and the Transit Garage projects. Transfers to organizations and individuals saw an increase of one hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. The increase is due to increased in funding to the Arts and Heritage Foundation and F C S S program funding. Bear with me, we're at the last two. Bank charges in short-term interest saw a six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar increase, and this was due to anticipated higher credit card fees as payment with credit card will be accepted for taxes, utilities and permitting fees. The city's current portfolio includes investments which are allocated to interest-bearing reserves and deferred revenue grants. And finally, transfers to and from reserves saw an increase of one point four million dollars, and this increase is due to the one point five percent annual budget increase included in the municipal tax requirement to support the R M R repair, maintain, replace of existing capital assets as per council policy C F S zero five. In total, eighty one percent of our property taxes go directly to delivery of services to residents and businesses, and nineteen percent of the property taxes are allocated to general government activities, which, in addition to the budget for council activities, includes services that support and enable the direct delivery of services to the community. The service layers include legal, legislative and record services, human resources and safety, financial and strategic services, information technology, economic development, communications and public affairs, the C A O office and council that we will generally refer to as corporate services. Looking at the tax impact per one half, one hundred thousand dollars in assessed value, this budget results in an eight hundred and ninety dollar property tax bill, representing a twenty nine dollar annual change from last year, the twenty twenty five budget. The distribution of tax dollars to the various service categories is illustrated on the screen. To meet the needs of our growing and evolving city, six business cases are recommended for twenty twenty six with fifteen business cases being funded funded from, sorry, sixteen business cases are being recommended for twenty twenty six, with fifteen being funded from assessment growth and one from reserve. Business case for the solicitor was approved off-cycle in twenty twenty five to be funded from the twenty twenty six assessment growth. As such, it has been presented, but is for information only as that decision has already been made. There is one council-initiated business case for three hundred thousand dollars to review policing services in St. Albert, and this business case is unfunded and presented for council's information. There's also one underfunded library business case for a community outreach assistant. Similar to the last, this business case is unfunded and presented for council's information. These business cases were prioritized and focused on legal and legislative compliance, maintenance of existing services and service levels, and enhancing our corporate operational and planning capabilities to meet the conditions for continued growth in the medium and long-term horizons. In short, these are investments for both today and into the future. We'll now move from the municipal operating budget to the municipal capital budget. The ten-year municipal capital plan has identified approximately eight hundred and sixty four million dollars in capital investment, of which three hundred and sixty million is attributed to R M R projects and the remaining five hundred and four million for growth-related initiatives. The plan includes various projects ranging from improvements to civic buildings, major road rehabilitation and expansion and replacement of life cycle, life cycle assets. As indicated by the projected available funding line, which is the gray line on your screen, the currently, the city currently faces a significant funding shortfall over the next years. And so what this is, is the entirety of the capital plan mapped out. You'll note that the blue indicates R M R projects, the green indicates growth projects. So this is everything on the list mapped out over the next ten years. The funded line does not include the opportunity for potential debt financing, so this is strictly a cost outlook. And that obviously debt financing is a tool which will be considered as part of our long-term debt strategy. Without the current infrastructure funding deficit plan, the city will not only be limited in funding future growth projects, but also R M R as well. The gray line would move down and hit the blue, which increases our infrastructure deficit over time, thereby increasing costs. Giving the funding deficit, administration has prioritized capital projects against council-approved prioritization matrix to establish a recommended list of growth capital initiatives. This recommendation considers future year requirements over the next four-year horizon. The twenty twenty six municipal capital budget includes a recommended twenty twenty, excuse me, a recommended twenty seven R M R projects for a total of three, thirty seven point nine million and eight growth projects at a total of seven point eight million for a total thirty five projects valued at forty five point seven million dollars. The city's capital infrastructure is grouped into seven main asset categories, which you can see on the screen. This has been established to assist in understanding the city's investment into different types of infrastructure, and the categories include civic facilities. This supports required structural improvements and featured, features to civic facilities. This year's recommended scope includes municipal facility repairs. Historic and cultural, this includes the preservation of historical and cultural, historical and cultural items of significance. This includes heritage facilities, replacement program and public art. Land and land improvements support initiatives relating to land improvements and the requirement to purchase land. There are no charters for this category in twenty twenty six. Master Plan Studies and Other establishes direction and plans for required current infrastructure. This year's charters include roadway preliminary engineering and design, municipal development plan and intermunicipal development plan refresh. Mobile and other equipment includes the management of scheduled maintenance and replacement of existing assets and the addition of assets for growth. Examples include replacement plans for emergency services, public works and transit mobile, transit mobile equipment, shop and yard equipment replacement, I T, garden theater and visual arts. This year's recommended scope includes mobile growth equipment. Parks and trails, support the repair and replacement of existing city parks and trails and parks and outdoor amenities lifecycle. This year's recommended scope includes neighborhood park development work. Finally, roads and other engineering structures supports the rehabilitating, rehabilitation of transportation networks, signage and sidewalks, roadway, arterial and collector programs. This year's recommendations include active transport, transportation network improvements and neighborhood traffic calming. In summary, the twenty twenty six proposed municipal budget has an associated three point nine percent tax increase to maintain existing services and service levels. There are sixteen business cases funded, of which fifteen are growth business cases funded from assessment growth, not impacting tax in the current year, and one business case funded from reserves. There is one unfunded council-initiated business case for three hundred thousand dollars to review policing services in St. Albert, and one unfunded library business case totaling ninety three thousand dollars for a community outreach assessment. Council would require a motion to fund either or both of these business cases. The proposed capital budget consists of twenty seven repair, maintain and replace projects valued at thirty seven point nine million dollars. Incidentally, this was approved by council in June, and eight growth capital charters totaling seven point eight million dollars. Next, I will review the proposed utility budget. In summary, the twenty twenty six proposed utility monthly bill will yield an average increase of seven point nine percent. The proposed utility capital budget consists of nineteen repair, maintain, replace projects approved by council in June valued at eighteen point five million, and there are no growth projects forecast this year. Proposed capital budget consists of nine repair, maintain, replace projects approved by council in June, valued at eighteen point five million dollars. There are no growth projects being recommended in twenty six. The city's utility infrastructure is grouped into four main asset categories by service provided. These categories include water infrastructure. Projects include the Water Operational Program, Water Distribution and Pump Station Reservoir Rehab, which respectively involves the timely rehabilitation, maintenance and replacement of existing infrastructure, condition assessment, construction, upgrade, rehabilitation and upsizing of water mains and design and rehabilitation of the city's three reservoir and pump houses. Waste water infrastructure, projects include wastewater operational asset program, household sewer service replacement and collection program, which involves the rehabilitation and or replacement of existing infrastructure, including mains and services and level of service improvements to address service limitations or increased capacity. Storm infrastructure projects include a stormwater collection and operational asset R M R program and stormwater management program, which involves service level improvements, condition assessments, rehabilitation, maintenance and replacement of infrastructure and proactive measures to control erosion and sedimentation, safeguard water quality, protect habitats and ecology. And finally, solid waste projects include our recycling depot upgrades. The estimated average household monthly rate for twenty twenty six is one hundred and seventy six point four nine dollars. Due to a rate change for water supplemental capital contribution rate, recycling flat rate and solid waste flat rate on May first of this year, twenty twenty five, the twenty twenty five average monthly rate went from one hundred and sixty seven point seven eight dollars to a hundred and sixty one dollars and fifty six cents, equating to a blended twenty twenty five rate of one hundred and sixty three dollars and fifty one cents. The seven point nine percent increase is based off this blended rate and is a reflection of rate increases from external sources for water purchase and wastewater treatment. This concludes my presentation. I would be remiss if I do not acknowledge the hard work of city staff from across the organization to prepare this document for your consideration. As a reminder, the next steps of this process will see administration provide the functional presentation split over the next two days, followed by public engagement and council debate. Thank you for the opportunity to present the recommended budget to council today. I will take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Uh, we will turn it over to councillor Hughes for questions.
Thank you. I know that we're going into detail tomorrow. I just a couple of quick questions through space on what you had brought forward as an overview. So how much do we still have in the capital reserve? Because you were talking about the, assuming that everything that you're recommending is funded. How much do we have left? It's all good.
I'll give you the amount right now, councillor Hughes, and then tomorrow we can have an update based on what we've recommended for twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Currently, there is two point three million in the capital reserve. And again, I'll follow up and have that ready for you tomorrow as to what if we have all the recommended, what the balance will be at the end, what we're anticipating the balance to be at the end of twenty twenty six.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. So yeah, for tomorrow, that'd be great. The other question I had is that chart you had about just the capital reserve in general, and we have like the gray line. Is that including expectations of taking money out of reserves to pay for various projects? Or is that just?
Yeah, that is correct. We're assuming that the replacement plan funding out of those specific reserves would be funding that, and that's also assuming that the R M R one point five percent would be continually being approved going forward.
Okay. Um, the other, last question I had was just, I know this is a little bit specific, but I don't, I don't know where to put it in the regular questioning and tomorrow is the credit cards. So you mentioned that we had additional fees from credit cards, but my thought, my understanding was that we were charging people an additional fee if they paid by credit cards. So can you just explain why we would have that, or is that just a pass-through, or can you just put a bit more detail into that?
No, thank you then. That's a good question. We are charging a fee. So you're seeing when Mr. Fletcher was going through the expense side, you're seeing the expense portion, which would have corresponding revenue. Um, you will note in this year's budget that we have adjusted the fee because we were realizing that we weren't recovering fully. So we've adjusted that to increase to more fully recover that expense.
So just round this circle for me then. So because you mentioned there was an increased expenditure, right? And but yet we're also saying that we're expecting to charge full recovery. So how, I'm, I'm just not getting a connection here.
And just to further provide the, that increase wasn't, was also including interest expense allocation. So it didn't, um, the expense that was showing a portion of that was the credit card expense and a portion was the additional interest expense that's allocated to defer, deferred revenue reserves.
So it's neutral in the end of the day.
It was not neutral in twenty five, but it is forecasted to be neutral based on our new fee in twenty six.
Okay. And just for people, like for the five people at home who are watching right now, um, because I'm sure it's going to be exciting. But the, the reason why in part that our rate is three point nine and not a four point five is because we've had higher than average expected growth for this one year, which is a bit of an anomaly. But that's why we've been able to bring it down to below four out of the gate. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Councillor Bromansky.
Thank you. Through the mayor to administration, I have about four questions or five maybe for you here. On the bill, uh, uh, on the capital projects, your chart didn't match what you said. Like you said, forty seven versus three point four and forty five, so the screens weren't the same numbers as what you were saying. So I, I just don't know which is correct.
Yeah, I apologize. Just give me a sec to look up the slide here. Done the municipal capital or utility capital?
The capital projects forty seven and three point four or forty five, three point five, they, those were the variables between the two.
Uh, through the mayor to councillor Bromansky, I believe the difference was in the number of projects, um, that it, but it said thirty four on the screen. And I, I believe he might have said thirty five. On the bottom of our municipal capital, of course, we have the, um, the line that goes to public art. Um, as per the policy, so if you count the rows, it's thirty five, but it's truly only thirty four projects with the, with the addition of the public art.
Okay, and there was a forty seven versus forty five difference. Is that adding those other?
It was forty five point seven versus forty five point five, forty five point seven is correct.
Okay, and then the next one, you mentioned the insurance costs and it was, I was under the impression that we were self-insuring in specific areas. So how has that changed?
We have a number of insurance providers, um, and we always seek the best. So, um, St. Albert is not big enough to solely self-insure is what I would offer, and so we do seek insurance providers and renegotiating um, our current coverage, uh, achieved some savings over the course of the last year.
Okay. And the next question in your, uh, capital services in the beginning, you have the data showing up until twenty three. Why, why? Why is, why do we not have data up to twenty five?
Um twenty five uh is still ongoing, so we won't have data for this year until the end of, we work on the calendar year, and so that will not be compiled and complete, um you can speak to twenty four.
How about twenty four then?
It's a timing through when all the annual reports and the year end audits are done, and then there's a timing of when it gets through municipal affairs on the sites available, so it's just a timing delay.
Right.
For those comparators.
And so that is the most recent information available on the Government of Alberta Municipal Affairs.
Just kind of old information, so. And then the next question is the uh, let's see here. The capital, oh, the tax increases you've got up from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty four, the tax increase in percentage amounts, do you ever have them in dollar amounts that you could present to us if I asked for that in a request?
Uh if if it was formally asked for, we could provide it.
Okay, I'll do that, that's all my questions, thank you.
Councillor Cortesh.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I again look for you to let me know if these questions are more appropriate uh tomorrow or whatnot. Uh I had, my first question was about the one point five percent uh for R M R, so uh Mister Fletcher, when you split out the two point two percent for current operating and then one point five percent for existing capital, I know we covered that last week in orientation, but I'm still trying to better understand exactly that one point five percent is council direction for additional spending on current infrastructure, or like is that that's additional spending over and above what's already in the operating, not operating budget because it's capital, could you help me out with that?
That's that's essentially correct, right, and so the uh the council polity mandates that um one point five percent every year um will be levied uh and then uh put into uh R M R specific reserves and focused on specific repair, maintain and replace projects. Um that is to avoid uh incurring an infrastructure deficit that will be far more expensive uh in the future um if we get to that point. And so what that allows us to do is maintain all our asset categories um over the course of their lifecycle with a deliberate planned maintenance schedule and not incur a a deficit in infrastructure that would bite us in the future.
Is there, so is there pay as you go capital, like are we taking money out of the operating to put into the capital, or is it just that one and a half percent or additional to that as well?
Thanks for the question, so there is an annual contribution from the operating municipal budget to support. Um so keep in mind that the one point five percent infrastructure funding strategy is to address our current assets and the pays you goes to support the current R M R, but also the growth capital.
Okay, the pay as you go addresses current and future?
Yes.
And that, and that pay as you go capital is in the two point two percent? And so there's, there's a
That is correct.
There's an envelope there and then the additional one point five percent as well.
Yes, that is correct, and that is to address like the current inflation, the growth in the asset base, new standards, so it's a combination, the asset growth inflation is, has been growing exponentially and our funding gaps, our our funding has been lagging and additionally, as Mister Fletcher mentioned, the reduction in grants impacts the need to increase that.
You you will also note a business case again which will come uh presented in detail, so I'd submit that it's best discussed over the next two days uh for pay as you go and increased pay as you go transfer to again um set the conditions for success so over the next, the coming years.
Okay, thank you, and then my my other question was just with respect to utility uh projects and growth projects, you'd mentioned Mister Fletcher that there's no growth projects for this year for utility, which just struck me as unusual because we're we're growing. Uh what like growth utility projects, what do you, would that be lift stations and what like, what would it mean by growth utility? And why don't we have any growth utility projects this year? Maybe that's better for some other type, I don't know.
I can give a high level answer, and then our our um utilities uh experts will be online in the next couple of days as well. Um when we talk about utility growth projects in terms of the utility rates, those would be actually not things like your, so we're not talking about your offsite levy projects putting in new infrastructure for new neighborhoods, that's to do with the offsite levy program. The um the growth projects that you would see under the utility rate model would be in relation to if we need for for serving existing residents, so we need a new back truck. We need a new, so it's a new piece of equipment we need or or something like that, it's not to do with new neighborhoods and and the underground infrastructure.
Okay, thank you, that that answered my question, yep.
Thank you very much, uh councillor Brabasky.
Thank you, through the mayor, one more question, with the the residential data versus the business, in twenty twenty one, we had uh seventy nine and twenty point two, and now it's seventy nine and twenty. Is that because there's more residential growth, is that gradually dragging it down a little bit again?
That that's essentially it, that's correct, and so we've had uh very strong residential growth, which is not a bad thing, right? But it does skew then the assistance split right between those two things when residential growth outpaces um commercial growth or non residential growth on the other side, yes.
And was that just one year or two years?
Um I I would have to look at the exact data, I apologize, I know last year for certain uh was a significant um difference between the two, but I believe it's uh the last two years, I'd have to, yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
I don't believe there's any additional questions, so we could go to six point two and
Excuse me.
Sorry, we do have a motion, Mayor, for six point one.
Yeah, there's a motion on that, I can read it in if you're ready.
Yeah, so uh councillor Mackay.
And it's under six point one, so that the proposed City of St. Albert Financial Plan and two thousand twenty six budget be referred to the committee of the whole.
We'll go to vote. Who's voting?
Do we put you close?
That motion passed unanimously?
Yeah. Just, just think, Sheena, we put you so close, now you're just like right there, you can ask him.
Can't see him, like literally can't see him.
All right, now we could uh move to item six point two. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to uh our, what is your official title, Director of Legal Legislation and Record Services uh is what I'll offer, so Miss Caulfield.
Uh thank you, council, so um item six point two is just a, it's a process item, it's to help um council um have greater flexibility during the course of the budget process. So just going to quickly explain what we're proposing to do, and then I'm going to explain the proposed motions, and if you have any questions afterwards, I'm more than happy to answer them for you. Um but essentially, um and traditionally what has happened is that um the council in St. Albert moves from a council format to a committee of the whole format in order to uh get more flexibility in terms of the process for the budget. Um so what we're asking is that four motions are passed, and um the first motion is that um we want to waive uh one of the rules in the procedure bylaw, which means we need a unanimous, everybody who's here to unanimously agree to do so. There is a rule in the procedure bylaw that says that items cannot be added to the agenda without um a super resolution, and we want to dispense with that rule for the purposes of the budget proceedings so that items can be added or deleted from the agenda without a motion. Um so the first motion that's um proposed here is just to waive that rule in the procedure bylaw going forward for the twenty six budget deliberation process. Um additionally, we're recommending that uh any voting that's done on any postponed motions related to the budget are all moved to the end of the process, so they're all postponed without having to make a motion to postpone them, so they're all just automatically postponed. So that's the second motion that we're asking uh for you to pass. Uh the third motion has to do with reading in to the record the budget information requests and postpone motions that have already been submitted to date, so just to add them to the record. And then the fourth motion, and this last motion is not actually debatable, it's just uh you can explain why you would like it or not, but there's no debate allowed on this motion, and it's to move from council into committee of the whole, and then at the end of that, what we would be doing is recessing today, instead of adjourning today's meeting, we would take a recess, and we will resume the meeting at the next budget deliberation date, which is tomorrow, I believe it starts at one o'clock. Um so that's just a high level overview of what the motions are proposing to do, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
And I I know this isn't my first rodeo here, Marta, but I have a a question here, so because we're going into committee of the whole, but we're going to have a council meeting before committee of the whole is finished, right? Or are we, because we're going to finish today, tomorrow, Thursday, but then we're still staying committee of the whole while we do debate, but then we're having a council meeting, so is it just like, how do we section that out in our little brain?
It's just paused, so the I, the way I think of it is that the budget process, the committee of the whole is just one long meeting, and we just take a break, and for you're correct, the a portion of it will take like a week's long break, and in the interim, we will have a council meeting on November eighteenth. Um they're totally separate from each other, but we build in that time in order to let the budget information requests come in and for administration to answer those and the postponed motions to come in, so we build in that time for that reason. But they they are separate and they're kind of parallel, um but this is just one long meeting that we're going to just take breaks in.
Okay, so what we're looking at is that the November fourth meeting, which will continue for until December, and that we can have other meetings separate to that, is that what we're basically saying?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, perfect, I can put forward the motion if you want, Mayor, whenever you want.
Uh any other, any other questions? That'd be great, thank you, councillor Hughes.
Sure.
That section five of the procedure bylaw twenty four slash twenty twenty two be suspended for the twenty twenty six budget deliberation to allow the addition of information as required without formally amending the agenda, that yet consideration of proposed amendments to the proposed twenty twenty six operating capital budgets may during the presentations be automatically postponed without the need for the motion to that effect until all presentations have been completed, that the budget information request and postponed motions received to date set out its attachments to the report dated November fourth twenty twenty five entitled twenty twenty six budget deliberation process are hereby accepted as presented and deemed as fully part of the twenty twenty six budget deliberation process as though they are verbatim into the record, and that council moved into the committee of the whole.
Thank you, we'll go to a vote. Those motions uh passed unanimously?
So you'll just have to call a recess now to the um start of the meeting again tomorrow.
I'll call for a recess now uh with uh commencing tomorrow at one P M.